Good evening. Welcome to the City Commission meeting Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. I'm sitting in for Susan tonight. Susan will be with us on Zoom. So if you, you know, if you hear a voice from the clouds, we won't all be like the Muppets looking around. We'll know that she's, she's here and knows what's going on. I would like to call the meeting to order. Clerk, will you call the roll call?
Mayor Adamchek?
Maybe she's here.
Yes.
There.
Mayor Pro Tem Karen McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Here.
Commissioner Motta?
Here.
Commissioner Mitten?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, we have five commissioners present. The quorum of three is met.
Fine. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item on our agenda are public comments. These are comments that do not necessarily, that are not, do not pertain to this evening's activities. These are just general comments. We do this twice a month. We will not discuss or debate these comments, nor will we make decisions during, on items presented. I have one person signed up. Remember, stick to five minutes.
These cham-- are we good?
Yeah.
These chambers are not a seat of democracy. They have instead become a shrine to hypocrisy. Since the commissioners before you don't seem to understand what they themselves embody, I will define it. Hypocrisy is the practice of claiming to have moral standards and belief which one's own behavior defies. Let's go over some examples. Peter sits at his desk preaching about how much he loves his neighbors and centers their needs in his life, talks about measuring twice and cutting once, but only after almost a dozen city employees have already felt the commission's saw. Were those hardworking city employees, whose lives are now upended and critically destabilized, not his neighbors? He espouses transparency while openly advocating for closed-door meetings and admitting on record that he isn't honest with the public. Are the public not his neighbors? Motta demands budget cuts and efficiency in every department the commission oversees, but only as the commi-- but as the only commissioner assigned to the law board, he seems to forget his own virtues. Even though more than half of our property taxes go directly to RCPD each year since at least 2021, he has abdicated his role on the board by admitting in an open meeting that he will give them whatever they ask for. Instead of properly managing our funds, Motta is in fact the only commissioner here who can be tied directly to the years of decisions that have led us here to the precipice of disaster. While Jamie enforces austere frugality on the city workers who keep this place alive, I see her brand-new mansion in Grandmere valued at over twice the median home value in the entire city. And I ask myself, what has she ever denied herself in pursuit of power? And can she really represent us when she's never even been on a ballot? Karen claims to love the poor and needy, and she virtue signals about her compassion for the LGBT community, but when I took off work to cover the city manager selection process, she mocked me for not getting paid to do so, boasted about how much money she was making as a commissioner, and repeatedly misgendered me while doing so. At lea-- and least, and last, but not least, is Susan. She is now the second mayor this year who has ended up on the wrong side of RCPD and publicly disgraced our entire town. A DUI into a liquor store and a fistfight with a slumlord's wife should be once-in-a-lifetime embarrassments for a small town like ours, but we've weathered two in just four months. In these chambers, she imposes decorum on the citizens who must ask to speak, yet she can't even impose decorum on herself. I call this wonderful, charming, safe, and beautiful town home because I love it and I admire my neighbors. Among our citizens are some of the most patient, intelligent, passionate, kind, and caring people I have ever met, and none of us are reflected by this commission. Instead, they have chosen to embody and represent the very worst of humanity: lazy, entitled, greedy, quick to angry, and hypocritical. Respect is not given; it is earned. I won't respect any of you behind that bench until a single one of you respects or represents us.
Are there any other public comments?
Amber Starling, 408 Houston Street. I'm going to list a few expenditures for you, some proposed. $30 million in property tax abatement for K-State. $3 million moving a sewer line for an entertainment venue. $110 million for an indoor swimming pool. $200,000 for a strategic plan they never read. $150,000 to give tourists free parking. $260,000 to incentivize Frontier to build homes, and a looming 10-year property tax abatement for the general contractors and landlords who will already benefit most from gentrifying Aggieville. With these real and proposed expenditures, I must wonder if the commission can differentiate between wants and needs. Some of us know the difference between wants and needs. Chief among them are the dozen city employees already laid off and the 70 on the chopping block. If you are among them, please contact me directly. Not only do I want to keep an accurate count of who has been laid off, I also want to provide you with resources. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor Pro Tem, commissioners, I have very little to say. It all revolves around respect and haven't seen too much of that tonight from those who have appeared before you. I respect you for being elected by a process that brought you here. I respect you for what you are trying to accomplish. I expect, I respect your point of view. I would say to those who have appeared before that, that a little bit more involvement in the processes and a little bit more conversation between you and those kinds of groups that want to appear to care about the city at large would be a goal to achieve. But again, respect is a good word to, to apply to daily life.
Bill, could you give your name and address?
I'm sorry. I'm Bill Muir, 2040 Shirley Lane, as long as nobody drives by my house.
Are there any other individuals who'd like to make a statement? Seeing none, we'll move on to commissioner comments. Jamie?
For the record, I voted no on the RCPD budget because it was too high for my taste for this past year. But what I actually want to talk about was being able to tell what we're going to talk about, because I've had some complaints from folks about not being able to see what the budget is or what the latest version of the budget is, like the one we're going to talk about tonight or did at the last meeting. If you go on to the city website, under Government, under City Commission, you see Agendas and Minutes. You can select that. You can get to the agenda, and you can get to all the documents that we have here that will give you all the latest and greatest information. As soon as it's out there, that's the same time we're getting it as commissioners. And also, if you like, and I know I'm signed up, but I can't remember how he did it, you can sign up to get alerts where you'll get an email that'll alert you anytime there's changes or anything like that. So there are methods to do it if you want to get the most up-to-date info.
Thank you, John. Peter?
I would just say I'm, I'm very sorry that our mayor is not here tonight. She has COVID, or she tested for COVID. I heard on NPR Today that COVID's kind of coming back, and it would be smart to get your, your vaccinations, or wear your masks. Thank you back there. You know, it's, we've gotten kind of relaxed about it because we're not seeing hospitals overrun with people and that kind of thing. But this new Omicron variety is a little tricky, and supposedly 20% of the people who get COVID get long COVID. So it's not just two lousy weeks of being sick. It's, you know, it can go on and on. So get out there and get your vaccinations, and even if you don't do it for yourself, you know, you may get it and then be near someone who's unwell or has a medical problem, and you don't want to give it to anybody else. So that's my, my plug for good health. Okay. The consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items that have been previously reviewed by the city commission and may be approved in one motion. A commissioner may request an item to be removed from a separate dis-- for a separate discussion and consider ne-- considered immediately following the consent agenda. And we will have comment from the public on any item on the consent agenda only, only items on the consent agenda will be discussed. I will note that item J has been pulled from the agenda because there was, it wasn't quite ready to be financed or whatever. They needed more conversation. So commissioners, any comments? Public, any comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tem McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes, but I need to recuse myself from item D1.
Mayor Adamchek?
Yes.
I think she said yes.
Oh, did she say yes? Okay. Sorry. Motion carries five to zero with the exception of item D1.
And I, I forgot. Susan reminded me, and I forgot, to mention the approval by, by Mayor Adamchek of Zaher Norstani to the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. So that's a new person on that, and we're pleased to have him. Okay, general agenda. Item A, consider development agreement with Frontier Development Group and issuing industrial revenue bonds for Lee Mill Villages and requested action by the applicant.
Good evening. Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development. The item I have for you this evening is a development agreement for Lee Mill Village. The lots that we're talking about this evening are those highlighted in red. The plat that we currently have in place has 10 lots and two tracts that the city owns. We're currently working on replating that, excuse me, into six duplex lots, so that, those will be reflected in the, the areas in red. This is just a general overview of the agreement that was in your packet. There is a performance grant for $260,000 for the developer to construct 12 duplex units. That will be a total of six structures. You can see below that how that, that grant would be allocated. Essentially, 75% of that would be given to the developer at, I'm sorry, the 3,200, or 32,000 of that would be given to the developer when there's 75% through construction. That's when the foundation and the footings are in place, and then the remaining of that performance grant would be upon final completion, which comes with a certificate of occupancy. The agreement does say that we would transfer those lots to the developer for $1, and we will pay off the existing or the remaining special assessments approximately $182,000. Also, part of your item tonight is for the sales tax exemption for, for the, the project. And the other thing I wanted to highlight is if the developer does not come through with their end of actually constructing these 12 units, then they would have to reimburse the city for any of the specials on those lots, what would have been the specials for each of those lots. That's kind of an overview of what that agreement has. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and the developer is also here with us this evening.
So when we talked about this earlier, there were some sidewalk work and things like that that we were going to have to pay for and do. Is that still part of this, or is that part of the performance grant?
That's part of the performance grant.
Okay.
They will make sure that all of the public infrastructure, private utilities, and the sidewalks are in place as part of that grant.
So basically, that's, that's kind of our price tag for this, for this development. We won't have anything else kind of sneak up on us, or, okay?
Nope. Part of the agreement does state, we're still working on the plat, as I mentioned, and part of that is some drainage requirements. And so there is a provision in there that if those, if whatever's needed for drainage comes back, and it seems that it's going to require additional incentive from the city, that the developer could walk away, and the city could also walk away from this. I suppose there is a chance that we could come back before you with something else, but at this time, that $260,000 would include everything that the city's participation.
Sure, I know the answer to this question, but is there any other place we can get the money besides the general fund?
I'll look to Jason.
Yeah, there's a, there's a payment we'll receive from K-State at the end of the year. They are buying back that NISTAC KSUIC building, and that's where I was going to propose. We capture that $457,000 annual payment, set it aside, and use it to pay for this incentive package. That money--
Okay, but is that, if we weren't going to use it to pay for this, is that just money we could use pretty much for anything we want?
You do have that discretion. We have been putting it in the bond and interest for the $6 million we spent out on North Manhattan Avenue between Claflin and, and Kimball. But it, it's a payment that has made its way into the 2002 Economic Development Fund, and we've been moving at money out of that fund into bond and interest on occasion. But you do have discretion over that money. It's not pledged or earmarked for anything specific.
Yeah, the reason I asked the question, I was always been for this project, and I said I was before. It's just, given our discussion later to go with the budget, it's $260,000 out of the general fund. So that's takes $260,000 in increased taxes or cutting staffs because we won't have this money. What is the, and we probably went over this, and we went over it before. What's the property tax revenue estimate that we'll get on? I'm trying to figure out how long it'll take to get this money back.
We did an analysis. I think part of the May presentation, I want to say it was around nine years. Does that sound right, Jason? And I can look at Tyler, who's the developer. He's saying, he's nodding his head. It was approximately nine years.
Yeah, that's a pretty long payback. Yeah, I mean, I just throw it out to the commission. I mean, I was all for this, but as we look at our next discussion, no, Karen, you've talked about sometimes there's projects we have to put off because it'll just directly translate into a tax increase or a staff cut in order to do it. And I know I'm going to make some arguments later about moving money around because they'll be the same. It, and I, I know there's arguments all the way around.
Is this something we, we want to consider taking from the workforce housing fund?
I, I wouldn't think so. I don't know that those would, well, one, we have that, it would kind of change the process or maybe ruin the integrity of the, the fund. Man, I don't know if that's, but I also don't know if they would technically meet the requirements. I don't remember what Tyler said they're going to be, that's, I mean--
Yeah, I, I think if I, I mean, if I remember, they were a little, a little higher.
Yeah.
And, I mean, in the, in the agreement, the developer has 24 months to pull a permit and 12 months to finish it after that. So, I mean, and then we're not paying anything until they're 75% done. So, I mean, we're looking at two and a half years before we really actually have to make this payment.
I'd be open to that.
I would say at the, at the time that that, those payments are due, will that come back to us or no? No? With, I mean, my question is, since we have, we don't quite know where the, the funds will be, I mean, I think we're comfortable doing it, just questioning where it's from. Can we make that decision later? No? Or choose to move it to a different fund when it comes due?
Yeah, and Tyler's going to need to speak to his timeline a little bit. I, I don't know if 18 months is, is really, fits his timeline, but it'd be good to hear from him, so you would know when that money would actually be moved.
I'll have him come up here and speak to these, and I'll stick around.
And we have already put in the infrastructure for this.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, you know--
20 years ago.
It's aging.
Yeah.
We kind of want to get some, how is it built over it?
Yeah, I don't think any of us are, are against the, the concept.
Yeah, this has just been a, a real difficult thing to do, and luckily the Cudo was able to fit in there and has been very positive. And to maybe get these lots off the to-do sheet, sheets into the, you know, free up staff time to think about other things.
Good evening, commissioners. I will say, I, I fully recognize that there's a lot of conversations that have to happen tonight. I, I recognize that this is a fairly big, or can seem like a fairly big request. I will say, we've worked really hard for, over the last 12 months to come up with a solution that, you know, works, you know, ultimately has to work, the, the development has to be financially feasible, but we've tried to come up with a, you know, really slim it down, really sharpen the pencil and figure out what is the minimum amount that we can request in order to make this viable. The, you know, there's a reason, quite frankly, that these lots have not been developed and that, you know, they've been marketed, they've been, we, you know, the city's tried to move them multiple times. The biggest challenge with the lots, and I know I've had conversations with many of you about this, but there are significant grade issues, and then there's also some, some infrastructure concerns that are going to need to be addressed regardless of whether housing development takes place. So if you did choose to just say, okay, we're going to do nothing, we just want to sit on it and continue just paying the, the taxes, which I would advise not doing, there's going to be sewer caps that are going to have to be addressed. People are starting to dump appliances on the site. I mean, they're going to have to be cleaned up at some point. So the request that we have here tonight is basically the infrastructure work that we're going to have to do in order to get the sites to where we can actually build something on them. I think you all know I'm passionate about workforce housing. I would love to be able to, to come before you today and say these are going to be in the workforce range. I, we just can't commit to that. I, I just don't know what that looks like. But I do know that if this package is approved tonight, we feel confident that we can get the infrastructure work done, we can get the gas lines and the electric lines run to the site, we can get the grade work done, we can get the sidewalks done, we can get the old sewer risers addressed, and get these sites to where they'll be able to be buildable and where you'll have 12 housing units. And I, I do think that the, the property tax estimates that were run, which we tried to run on, on a conservative estimate, those did have about a nine, under a 10-year payoff with, with this amount, which I know 10 years is a long time, but that's, what, a 10% return? I mean, that, that's a decent return on your money, and then that revenue will be in perpetuity thereafter. So I'd be happy to answer any, any questions you have.
What's your timeline looking like for this?
It is hard to say definitively right now, simply because we're reliant on utility providers, and so I'm hesitant to give you a firm timeline. I don't know if we have a timeline on the replat. So basically, the way developer, the development agreement would work is that once the replat is filed, we would have to close in 45 days, and then we would have, is it a 24-month window to get the permits pulled? We would anticipate that being done sooner, but we would need to get all of the site work done and work with Evergy and Kansas Gas to get the utilities to the site before we can pull a permit.
So best-case scenario, what do you, what do you think you're looking at?
I would say we would target, if the replat's done this fall, if we can commit to that, then we would hope to be starting construction on some of these by next year. So 75% completion on most of these would happen in 2026.
Okay.
Tyler, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
We can.
Yeah. One, I'm, sorry, you just sent up a red flag for me when you said you weren't sure how many of these units are going to come in, in the workforce housing range. My impression, that was one of the whole reasons for incentivizing this project. Can you, can you address that a little bit further, please?
Yeah, I, I apologize, Susan, if, if I insinuated that in any way. Our goal has always been to attempt to make these within the workforce housing range. I just can't commit for sure that we can be in that range. So we've, I, I don't believe we've ever had a, a discussion about tying these to a, to a certain income range. We just have attempted to, to be able to deliver that.
I would just, I'll add real quick. When we initially issued this RFP back in June of 2023, or somewhere around that, we did hope to have a workforce housing project and also utilize moderate income housing grant from, from the state. Frontier was the only proposal we received with that RFP, and as we began to work through the costs associated with developing this site, it became rather clear that it was going to be very difficult to get these units within that range. Certainly, that could happen if we were to utilize, or if we were able to get a grant from the state, or if that cash incentive were to be increased, but we ultimately decided that that wasn't the route to go.
And to further clarify, Susan, our, you know, our goal would certainly be to try to make these as affordable as possible. I think this is a great project. It showcases that, that infill development can work within the city. But to be very, just very frank, the, the performance grant that, that we are requesting, if that was upfront, that would reduce a significant amount of borrowing cost at eight-and-a-half percent interest. As it is, I, I think it's a better agreement for the, for the city. It protects the city and city's interest in the fact that it's structured as a performance grant. But as a development organization, we have to go out and frontload all of those infrastructure costs and clean up, you know, every, clean up the sites, get all the grade work done, get the sidewalks, the sidewalks done, and we're going to be either investing those dollars or borrowing those dollars, and the cost of capital is, is just expensive these days. So while I would love to stand up here and say we are for sure going to be workforce, I, I just cannot commit to that. I'm not saying that we won't come up with a solution that we're able to, to make it workforce. I just didn't want to put that in an agreement and then not be able to, to deliver on that.
I might note that we do need structures at all levels.
Right.
And so there may be workforce that this is, is really what they want, I mean, because of, of what they're making. So--
Right.
You know, workforce--
And I think, you know, we have the, the latitude to make that decision, and I think this is close, and I know it's not horseshoes or hand grenades, but it's also an area of the city that we have a really, really hard time. I mean, to get this done.
We, we can remove the general fund reference to the agreement if that's heartburn. We may need to make a finding out of a different fund. General fund obviously gives you the most flexibility, and it really is a matter of taking a payment, putting it in the general fund, and waiting for that expenditure to come along. It could be done in '26. It sounds like it doesn't need to be done in '25, but I just wanted to, that, spending it out of the general fund is fully within your purview. Moving it to another fund, we'll have to come back and talk about what it takes to, to get that done.
Okay, yeah, that's my heartburn.
Just that. Give you a little less heartburn.
Yeah, you can take that out. I'll be--
Okay.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions? Any one from the audience wish to make a statement? Oh, yeah.
Do you want me to sign back in?
Um, do they, no.
Top of the agenda tonight is whether or not to transfer land and money to Frontier for city prop-- transfer land and money to Frontier, that we have already sunk over a half a million dollars into purchasing in 2017. As with all things the commission wants to shove down our throats, this was released to the public at the last moment only three days ago, and I have not had the proper time to thoroughly research this absurd subject. However, as we are essentially, essentially subsidizing Tyler's business to the tune of over a quarter million dollars from our already imperiled general fund, or whatever you want to call it--
from our already imperiled general fund, or whatever you wanna call it, I took the time to ask around and collect some very basic information about Frontier and Tyler. They have a 3.9-star rating on Google, 1.9 on Yelp, and a 4.1 on Facebook. Shocked, but not surprised. At first glance, they are already in need of serious improvement, and any sane person would hesitate to sign a lease with them, much less hand them a quarter of a million dollars. It's worse when you start reading the reviews and start listening to the interviews of your community. As you do, a pattern begins to emerge. If the commissioners had bothered to even do a quick Google search, they'd know that their star rating would be even lower than that, because there are also several false bot reviews that are inflating their numbers both on Google and Facebook. It would have also become undeniably apparent that just reading off their negative reviews would take me all night. If our commissioners had done even the due diligence of a middle-schooler reading Spark Notes the night before their book report was due, they would have uncovered a laundry list of complaints. Fraudulent charges on multiple bank accounts, fraudulent charges against multiple security deposits, fraudulent advertising, black mold, broken stairs, broken plumbing, broken and inoperable HVAC systems, broken windows, collapsed ceilings, bed bug infestations, bat infestations, spider infestations, mice and squirrel infestations, hidden fees, broken leases, horrible customer service, unbearable living conditions. And finally, something this commission should be very familiar with, complete and utter mismanagement. Fun fact, the city's own in-code enforcement has had to get involved with them on over a dozen different issues. All this to say, I know you're going to ignore all the interviews with their tenants, the metric ton of negative reviews, and long history of shady and less-than-legal business tactics. You're going to pass this with at least a four-to-one vote, and you're going to hand Tyler and his dubious business partners over a quarter of a million dollars and transfer public land into their undeserving hands. You're going to do this because it's what you always do, and it's exactly why the city has almost gone bankrupt and has overspent their budget by almost nine million dollars in the last couple of years. Mismanagement, hypocrisy, and corruption, that will be this commission's legacy. And with Frontier, I think the saying "birds of a feather" rings very true.
Hello, my name is Noah Rude, 926 Claflin Road. I'll write that down real quick. So I think, I think she covered it pretty well. I don't have anything prepared. This was very short notice. But I have been a renter for a while here in Manhattan. And I could say that Frontier Development, which was Frontier Property Management, has a pretty notorious history of taking advantage of students. Back in 2020, I interviewed a K-State student, Audrey Wilson. And she was, by her words, I have the interview up on YouTube. If you go to Renters Together, MHK doc, or Renters Together, MHK on YouTube, you got the whole interview there, where she was pressured into renting out a property with a bat infestation. And when this was made obvious, there was some pretty, you know, last-second repairs that actually didn't solve the problem. And long story short, the bats were still there. They pooped all over the apartment. And Frontier would not let her out of her lease agreement. So she ended up having to pay for two different units so that way it wouldn't hurt her mother's credit score from breaking the lease. And yes, like she said, there are a lot of terrible reviews. If you, I guess, look a little bit more into some of the property management than, you know, the awful property management companies like Frontier Property Management, it is very apparent that property management companies like this, what they will do as a business practice is they will take advantage of students and, you know, the transitory population that comes in here and gets them into a lease. And they will do anything and everything not to make repairs, try to add on additional fees. And then when it's time to move out, they will do anything and everything to take your entire security deposit. So I don't think it's very responsible for the city commission to reward bad business practices. And, you know, maybe you, you're getting a decent deal with this, but with the track record of Frontier Property Management, or now Frontier Development, who's to say the conditions these houses are going to be upon completion? So that's all I had. I didn't have any time to actually prepare anything.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I had a question for either Stephanie or for Mr. Holloman. How did you guys arrive at that nine-year payback? Was that in your presentation? I didn't see it. Are, are they not going to answer?
Do you wanna answer?
The mayor laid out the rules. This isn't a dialogue. But Stephanie did reference the May meeting is where the information is at.
What was the total?
I don't know. It's in the May meeting. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. I would hesitate to accept that it would get paid back in nine years if you guys aren't even aware of the total. You don't know if it's the 260,000 plus the 182,397.02, or if that includes the 600,000 in back taxes that the city already paid for the property in 2017. So I would think that part of that due diligence would be to understand how much is actually getting paid back in nine years. Thank you.
Other comments? Hearing none, close the public comment period. Commissioners?
I mean, I'm good with this. Do we have to say something in the motion to change that reference or not?
We'll make the change.
Okay.
Okay, I'll motion to approve the land transfer and development agreement with Frontier Development Group, LLC, for lots 1A to 6B, Lee Mill Village, Unit 5, and approve resolution number 082024-F, determining the city's intent to issue industrial revenue bonds and authorizing a sales tax exemption for LMB Development, LLC.
Second.
It's moving second. Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Adam Chek? Mayor Protim, Karen McCullough?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, we are moving on to item B, the waste, the water and wastewater fund. And to provide some direction for the 2025 budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, I am stepping in for Randy. He is ill this evening. So we're going to run through some of his slides pertaining to water and wastewater. I will go through these fairly quick. We will, yeah, I want the PDF. Is it? I don't think it's one of the ones that's open. Water and wastewater will be back in front of you this fall to talk about rates. This is a overview, really, of where they're at. And we, we do this annually to give you a feel for just where it fits into the budget and its total. And then also give you an update just how revenues and expenditures have performed throughout the year. But I assure you, Randy will be back in front of you with greater detail. There is a ten-page memo in the packet. If you had the opportunity to read that, you probably don't even need me to go through these slides. He is extremely thorough and gives you an idea where we're at from both the water and the wastewater perspective. He gets into a little background here as to why increases are necessary, and they're all very valid. And when we run an enterprise and a water and a wastewater operation, which provides just such critical services to our community, we like to highlight the things that drive that operation, what's, what's necessary to be maintained, and ensuring that we have the financial resources to do so. I, I would be remiss to leave off the state and federal requirements because they're a big part of what they do at both the water and wastewater treatment plants. Our projected budget for this year was 9.9 million. We had an actual fund balance of 10.8. So we're, we're in a pretty good financial position. This year, though, I think we, we're obviously taking and selling less water than we have in the past. I know I've run out to turn off my system multiple times this summer because it's raining. And we've just had very timely rains, and you see eight percent less in consumption than we had last year. It is about equal to our five-year average. And we do set ourselves up in these funds to withstand some, some shifts in usage. But for the most part, I think we're, we're in a decent position. Every year, Randy creates these, along with our finance staff, to give you an idea just where fund balances are, how they're projected, based, based on the actuals versus projections, and then recommended for the out-years. Again, to keep that utility in a, in a good financial position moving forward. Most of the graphs show two, three years of, of a comfort level and then starting to dip below that recommended fund balance. And it's where the actuals this year outperforming are actually helping us in the future, which gets into really more of just an understanding of what we are spending our money on. He does talk about this IT network administrator for both water and wastewater. That cybersecurity is increasing every day. You don't have to look very far to see the, the scariness of all of that that is impacting communities across the country. We did hire a director of public utilities. We'll start September 3rd. Kevin Niles, that's in addition to the, the operation. And then just much more outsourcing is taking place, moving a lot of projects and those engineering services out of house to help us keep up with infrastructure needs and facility needs. Our chemical costs are increasing. I ran across an email. I was looking for some data from Randy about a year ago. And it was easy to see some of those chemical costs have gone up tremendously. There is an increase in the transfer this year. If you recall, some of you may remember, we did a little bit of an analysis on the general fund support of the utilities. We came to a conclusion, it was around $2 million, and we're, I would say we're gradually getting there. I'm sure Randy would say, this is an awful big jump at one time. But we do provide a lot of support in the general fund and throughout the organization to the utilities. He's got some rate increases. The budget sheets that you have in front of you in the packet this evening, they are the 4%. He talks to you a little bit about the 5% strategy throughout these next few slides. He, obviously, our, our projected fund balance is, is in good shape. It's a million more than we were last year. I think he's got some strategies in terms of where he wants to land out there in 2030. And that 2030 vision is constantly on his mind and the fund's mind in terms of just where you wanna be. He knows he's got some expenditures coming up. His 4% rate running out does show a little bit of gap between really where you wanna be and where you projected to be. I think he's got probably a slide on the 5% getting closer to that 2030, 2035 timeframe. The impacts, you can look at the 4% versus the 5%. Just to reiterate, I confirmed with him this morning, a unit of water is 748 gallons. So when you think about a low user, it's roughly 1,500 gallons on, on a monthly basis. The residential averages get into the seven. A high residential user would be in the 20 units on a monthly basis. But then you get into the businesses that are obviously using quite a bit more. And then we have obviously the high-end on, on the business side. But you can see the difference on a proposed monthly difference between these, anywhere from 90 cents a month to over 300 for that high-business user. I would, I would say the majority of, of the folks we're dealing with are in the, the low average on both business and residential. So you can see the $1.53, the 3.28 for the business on the medium side. 5%, it jumps up a little bit. A $1.12 and a $1.91 versus the 90 cents and the $1.53. And then on the business side, looks like a quarter or more for the smaller business and about $4.10 difference on that medium-sized. Any questions on that? Everybody tracking usage and that potential rate increase?
I do, I have a question on the recommended fund balance. Is that something that gets scored when we're looking at bond ratings and stuff like that?
Both of the utilities, historically, our rating agencies have really appreciated the commission raising rates when they need to in order to maintain that fund balance. So when they look at a $25 million utility, they see $10 million. They see last prior actions taking 3% or 4% or 5%. Those are great indicators to a rating agency that is a, a healthy fund. And it's one that the commission recognizes and supports. That's our history in this fund. It comes up each time. Rena's in on those calls, too. She can comment. But I, my, my memory and consistent feedback from our rating agencies, they're very appreciative of where we're at with our utilities.
Jason, I have a question.
Sure.
So I was a little bit confused with having these presentations in, on tonight's agenda. So is this basically giving us a heads-up that the funds are relatively healthy, but at some point when we have finished this budget cycle, Randy will be coming back to ask for these rate increases? Or are we being asked to approve these increases now as part of the budget process?
Could you, could you repeat the question, summarize it?
You bet.
Because I think it's.
Yeah, the mayor asked a question about, is, is this a heads-up type of presentation? Or is the commission actually taking action tonight to improve, to increase the rates? It is a heads-up. The formal action on the rates will be this fall. We can, sometimes we move it right up to December to where the implementation is just right around the corner. We have done it on the night the commission approves the budget in September before. This year, Randy, I, he expressed to me a desire to wait a little bit to give him a little more history and see if we get a, a warm rest of August and a warm September, we may actually sell more water than we're projecting at this point. So he, he would like a couple more months of data before he really approaches you all for a rate increase. Mayor, the biggest part of tonight is that $229 million total budget number that we have, that we'll talk about later in the evening. This 4% increase is in the budget sheets. It reflects that increase in that $229 million budget. Does that make sense? So in some respects, you are acknowledging the potential, but you can always bring it down. And if you wanna give guidance that you don't want these increases, we can adjust the budget by the time you adopt it in 2017. If you're okay with the 4%, just from a budgeting perspective, it doesn't lock you in to that rate. You can actually bring it down or not have any increase at all. You'll still have the budget capacity to take in more revenue. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Mostly set, what decisions are we making in 2017? Mostly set what decisions are we making in 2017?
Jason, you threw out twenty seventeen at some point in that conversation.
Did I?
Yep.
My bad.
Thank you, Jason.
Sorry, I'm not recalling the twenty seventeen reference.
It was like a minute ago.
Yeah. Biden, wow, sorry about that.
You're probably thinking about our meeting on September seventeenth. Jason, we have a commission meeting on September seventeenth.
Oh, yeah, three seventeen, nine seventeen, nine three and nine seventeen. So, yeah, September. Two meetings in September, you can still give us a lot of feedback on the budgets.
Was that clear what the mayor was asking? The dates?
Yeah. Any other questions about the impacts on the four and five percent alternatives? So he gets into the monthly comparisons on the municipalities. Manhattan is usually right around the fifty or the middle, if not a little bit leaning towards the bottom. Dodge City and Coffeyville are just really impressive at what they deliver water and wastewater services to their community. Just about everybody else in that grouping is, you know, between thirty-six and, you know, forty-five dollars on a monthly basis, and we kind of land right in the middle of that. You do have some upper-end folks, and Randy probably knows some history as to why some of those are so high. But we've been maintaining ourselves right here in the first-class cities in that bottom half from a water perspective.
I would really like to know how Dodge City does that because they have meatpacking plants, and meatpacking plants use a lot of water.
They may have a rate structure that they pay a lot to do that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because that's residential, so those wouldn't be included in that average, but...
But it could absolutely keep the residential down if you have a high user like that. K-State is our biggest customer, and they do fund a lot of what we do at the treatment plant. He goes through the six-year CIP, very many large projects. This cross-town water transmission main, I know Brian has more information on it if you'd like to talk more about it. It is comprehensive. Is this the one that's also partnered with some of the storm? Or is that just the Carney project, just that section, maybe? Yeah. Okay, so this one, I think, gets all the way out to the northwest?
Yeah, it goes from the plant, so one of the studies we can... One of the studies in the master plan showed that if we can get from the plant out to Seco, and we can do that efficiently across town, we can actually eliminate some pumping capacity at Sunset and at Tecumseh, so we can take some pumping capacity offline and save money. That's what this is.
So with that would come some sort of analysis that would highlight making the investment in this project and then savings over time. Anderson Avenue, obviously on the horizon here, should bid in the next couple of months, should be under contract by the end of the year.
Is that?
This is our ARPA money.
That's partly COVID money, isn't it?
Yes, yes. This is our two point seven million that Wyatt and Randy and Brian have been working diligently, and many other staff, I know Karen's involved, too, to get that design out for bid. Levy cost share, and then the wellfields. We're always looking for additional water resources. The unplanned and other projects, pretty significant, but we still need to always take care of where we dispose our lime, our relocations themselves. And then Aggieville's got additional water mains that we need to take care of on Morrow. It's just a matter of when. I gave you somewhat of a schedule, I think that can take place in twenty-six, twenty-seven timeframe, but we'll see. This is Randy's little character to give you a reminder of questions. I thought it was a little defensive, but, you know, inquisitive, maybe.
So those projects, we plan to pay for those out of the water fund, right? That's...
Yeah, and that really ties back into that twenty thirty-five type of forecast. You know, when he looks out in the out years, he works very closely with finance. They structure their projects coming on, rolling off, and rate increases to help offset those costs.
Okay.
I just want to say, I think Randy and whoever else worked on this did a really great job with this and the memos that went out, they were informative and just really detailed. And I appreciate his showing us comparisons and then the forecasting with the projects. I think that was very helpful in understanding it all, and if we can see more of that from everyone, that'd be great.
Just a discussion item.
And I can hop into wastewater, and then if folks want, or do you want to address them separately?
Public input on the... Please come forward.
Hi, sorry, I didn't check in on the sheet.
You have to sign in right there and tell us your name and address.
Sure. It's Peter Herman at one-two-one-five Laramie Street.
Okay.
And I apologize, this is my first city council meeting.
That's fine.
I've only been living in Manhattan for about a year now. But I guess I want to speak not just as a citizen of Manhattan, but also as a scientist. You mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that COVID is on the rise on a national and international scale. I think at this point, the last number that I saw is that we currently have more than a million people being infected with COVID-19 daily. That's at this point, something like one in thirty-three people, one in thirty-two people currently have COVID in the United States of America. There's about two dozen people in this room, so it's more likely than not that somebody in this room has COVID.
Peter, this is supposed to only be about the water discussion.
Oh, trust me, I'm getting there.
Okay.
So one of the main ways that we can detect COVID-19, and one way that would be faster than waiting for hospital data to get in, would be wastewater viral shedding detection. I'm not sure if that would come out of the water fund, and I don't know if the city's already invested in those resources. But that would be something that I would recommend. We need to be checking for COVID-19. It would help us identify surges before the hospitals are aware they're happening. It would allow us to identify which strains or varieties we might be facing. And I think there's also some science developments in detecting things like monkeypox and the bird flu, which are also looming on the horizon. These are things that aren't going to be going away anytime soon, and I think that trying to factor that into the 2025 budget and beyond would be good practice.
I know KDHE was doing testing initially. I'm sure we're still doing some of that. Can somebody, Brian, anybody?
Yeah, I'll jump in. We have looked into that a little bit. There's a couple of issues with it. One is we tested at the plant, so that covers the entire city. It also covers blue township. We can't tell, you know, down to like a block-by-block area of where that's coming from. The second one is it takes three or four days for that waste stream to get to the plant, and then it takes another couple of days to test it. So our testing would always be about five to seven days behind. I don't disagree with what you said because I've read those articles, too, and they're very informative, but it's not as quickly as you would like to capture data.
But we are doing some testing.
No, we are not. We've looked into it, we looked into it during COVID, and we didn't do it just because of that delay, that time delay.
Okay, but KDHE is doing some, in some, I know that there's some testing going on in Kansas because they talked about the fact that...
Yeah, there's different cities that are, some cities are, some cities aren't. It's a cost issue, it's also just of how quickly do you want that data?
Okay.
Right, and I can't speak to the efficacy of just the hospital tracking. I don't know what the turnaround time would look like from when they have COVID patients versus when they can publish that either to the CDC or to other groups, but that would still be my semi-professional recommendation.
It's a very good question and a very good point. Maybe we could do a little bit of research in there and get back to the public on that.
Sure, yeah.
And check with KDHE and check with our local health department and see, you know, what's going on with that because we need to protect our citizens. Thank you. Okay. No more discussion? Everybody's discussed out? Okay, we'll move on to C, stormwater.
We've got the second half here, we got wastewater, mayor.
Oh, wastewater, sorry. Moving too fast.
No, you're good, ten slides, here we go. We have a beginning fund balance, actual of nine point one million, I think we projected seven point seven. So our year-to-date, we're up three percent on revenues, so we're working very well in this fund. All the divisions from an expenditure standpoint are at or under budget, so the balance and the fund itself are very healthy. We don't see a lot of red out there to the right, which is a good sign. I've mentioned the IT administrator, the cybersecurity, obviously investments along with the director of utilities. And again, just kind of that outsourcing of management and engineering services. Still recommending the three percent, which is per forecast, and it's been our multi-year strategy, trying to get that fund balance out to eleven million dollars so we can incorporate those projects within that CIP. You can see the impacts to this, less than a dollar on the low-end user, about a dollar forty-six for the average, and just over three thirty for the residential high. Again, you get into business, high-end user, all their bills are pretty substantial. We're right in the middle on wastewater sewer bills. Again, Dodge is down there near the bottom. But yeah, right in the middle, first-class cities in Kansas, and we try to hang there. A lot of CIP projects were underdesigned for the treatment upgrade and expansion on the bio-solids program. We got that Setchild and Gardenway sewer trunk main upgrade, and I know Randy's out there negotiating easements and property to make that improvement. That's an area that surcharges when we get high water, and we've talked a lot about this around the West Loop area and the Garden Grove area. Couple plant upgrades there, Aggieville downstream analysis, and then a few other projects throughout the community. A system charge meter installation, maybe further adjusted later, nothing proposed for one-call fees currently. EPA, we do get into our valve exercising, maintenance, and inspection program each and every year. Lead and copper, we continue to do our inventory update. And the PFAS and the PFOS, these are lifelong chemicals that just don't go away. We're starting to look more into that point-of-entry testing where that waste is coming into our system. And I think Abdu's here, if you have any questions about this. He's still here. But if you've got questions, he can absolutely answer those if you have them. There's our comparison for the residential combined bill. So this is both water and wastewater. Again, kind of hang out towards that middle group of those first-class cities. Any questions on this? I think you'll hear a lot more about PFAS and PFOS in the future. Just a lot of regulations coming down on that, so we're gonna be in the testing mode and addressing that in the future.
I did have a question about that, just about the most recent EPA rule that came down and how we sit with that currently.
Are you talking about lead and copper revised rule?
No, the PFAS?
PFAS, okay. Well, the PFAS, basically, we're required, we're gonna do start testing October. That's gonna be for our finished water, the water treatment plant. And we're gonna, we're gonna do one in October, and we have another one in spring, 2025. So we're committed to that. We, we, there's few laboratory, laboratory nationwide that can perform this testing. So we basically contacted those laboratories that are in the EPA list, and we have a bidding process, and we selected one laboratory from Indiana to do performance testing. So we're committed to that. We're also gonna do additional testing than was required. We, so, but the process will start in October.
Other questions on PFOS? Discussion?
No questions, I mean, I'm fine with those numbers that are in the budget now. I know you have four percent in, it was five. I don't want to go to five, I might go to four point five, but, I mean, I'm fine with what's there.
Yeah, I'm withdrawn on that.
Okay, then, any public comment on wastewater funds? Hearing none, we'll move on to stormwater funds. And Brian?
It's yours now.
Sure had a lot of stormwater lately.
Yeah, seems to be the topic of the day, huh?
Yeah.
We haven't even had a good rain lately. So, good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Brian Johnson, City Engineer. I got stormwater portion tonight, real quick agenda. Talk about the 2023 actuals and our background. We've got some community survey information from 2023, and then the anticipated fee structures through 2027. I do want to talk a little bit about the downtown east and west CIP projects because they're massive infrastructure projects, and they really drive that fund and the costs and the fees for the next decade or so. Then talk a little bit about comparable cities, and then the Fee and Loew program, that's the second year of it. When the commission passed it a couple of years ago, they asked us to come back every year and talk about it, and so we're back to talk about it. So background, stormwater fund expenses and revenue. Revenue slightly overachieved this year again, which is a good thing. That tells us that our model's doing a really good job at making sure that we aren't over-anticipating revenue. Expenses were slightly higher than anticipated also. A lot of that is as we've cut general fund expenses, we've moved some expenses into the stormwater fund to try to pick up those gaps. And then the equivalent cost goal also. So that has finally been achieved after a six-year flattening. And the equivalent cost goal goes back to 2016 when we did the cost of services study, and Commissioner Modda was here at that time. The cost of services study at that time showed that if you were a large residential user, you were paying about forty percent of what a residential user was using. And so over the course of about a six-year flattening program, we brought those rates up so that they're the same now, and we've achieved the goal of your bill is based on the amount of runoff that you generate. So if you have a square foot of driveway at your house, or you have a square foot of parking lot at Walmart, you pay the same based on that square foot. That's where that equivalent residential unit comes out that Jason likes to talk about quite often. Review of the community survey, stormwater always one of the top three or four. 2023 quality stormwater infrastructure and drainage, about fifty percent happy, about thirty-five percent unhappy. We have done some projects since then, we've added some detention since then. So, you know, over the course of the next decade or so, we hope to really address some of these and get some of these to move up on the list for community surveys. Again, some more community survey information from 2023. Maintenance or quality of stormwater infrastructure and drainage, only about a thirty-three percent are happy or pleased with it. Of course, we'd like to move that up as we identify projects and start making some differences. Anticipated fee structure, so right now we have a two dollar and fifty cent levy surcharge. So out of your bill, we take two dollars and fifty cents, we put it aside, and that money's gonna pay for the levy. That's included in the 2024. For 2025, we are recommending a twenty-five percent or a twenty-five cent increase to two dollars and seventy-five cents. When we know what those final levy amounts are, then we can set that rate exactly. We think we're getting pretty close to what we think that final rate will be, but we won't have final costs here for a couple of years, so we're kind of guessing as we go with information we're getting back from the Corps. They came and gave a presentation a couple of weeks ago and kind of gave us some updated financials that Rebecca was able to take off and do a lot of work with, so appreciate all that effort. 2024, we're at ten seventy-five, and 2025, we're recommending twenty-five cents in the surcharge and then fifty cents in the... Twenty twenty-four, we're at ten seventy-five. In 2025, we're recommending twenty-five cents in the surcharge and then fifty cents in the base fee. So again, the downtown east and west watershed, this is where the vast majority of projects are identified in our, in all of our master plans. Sorry, can, can you go back? Yes. This is just a base fee for stormwater that's on the water? So there's, so there's a base fee that we have and that funds everything. Okay. And then we have the surcharge, which is just directly to the levy. Okay, got it. Thanks. So downtown east and west watershed, again, where the vast majority of our projects are identified. We have done a few of these. Project one is done. Project two is part of the levy. Project three actually is ready to go to bid here, probably within the next sixty days or so. And that'll help pick up water from the third and Bluemont area, Sonic, the U-Haul down there, where Dairy Queen is down in there. We get some significant flooding down there, five, six feet deep. So we're trying to find another outlet for that water, hopefully carry it north up into the new gate well and then out past the levy. But this is where the majority of those projects are identified, and you'll see that in the next slide. So again, the TCB channel, hoping to bid it this year, 2024. South Manhattan Interceptor, we're about thirty percent designed on that. Pretty expensive project. We're looking at maybe doing some other things to try to reduce some costs and value engineering. Casement Road, that's a project that's been on the books for quite a while. We're trying to figure out a way to get to three lanes on casement from Allen to Brookmont, where that two-lane section is. It's two-lane open ditch right now. We have the stormwater funds identified, two-point-two million. There's about, well, we've designed it to about thirty percent. There's about a seven-million-dollar delta on how we get the pavement down. So that's our delta on the casement project. We've looked at all sorts of funding sources for that. We just cannot seem to find one that will fit. We don't have a whole lot of accidents there, so I can't get a safety grant. I don't have a lot of delays, so I can't get a cost-share grant. There's no businesses there, so I can't get a PA grant. There's just not a lot of opportunities for grants there. So we're, we're still trying to crack that nut. We've been looking at that for probably five to six years now. We did get thirty percent design, so we can get some pretty decent estimates on it. And there's a big delta. Carney Street, Third and Third Street Outfalls, that's part of that TCB North project. That's the next project in line. That would address the stormwater on the west side of TCB and go up Carney, probably to Juliet, somewhere in there, and that's where we would phase it. And then Fourteenth Street Interceptor, that would be a project that would go from points up Fourteenth Street to Anderson, Anderson and Bluemont. Anderson and Fourteenth Street is a, it's kind of a choke point for a lot of stormwater. There's actually two watersheds that come together there. We get a lot of overflow, a lot of flooding in that area. And then, of course, lower Carney. So that would be the next piece from Carney. That would be from Third to Juliet, pass that outfall. So again, this is the 2024 fund balance. This is how it looks today. Again, we're in pretty decent shape. Couple of years ago, Commissioner Modd, I'm sure you remember, 2027, we were looking at actually having a negative balance. And by doing real slow incremental raises, we've been able to move that 2027 dip now out to 2035. So it's out there quite a ways. And these are really a product of these payments coming online. So again, slow and steady wins, wins the race, and that's what we've been doing, slow incremental increases. This would be the 2025 fund balance if we don't have rate increases this year, zero percent, zero, zero increase. And then this is with our recommendation of the fifty cent base and twenty-five cent levy. So every homeowner in Manhattan would pay another seventy-five cents a month. They're paying about ten fifty now. So it'd be about the cost of a Diet Coke a month. Depending on how big your business is, would depend on how much increase your monthly fee would be. Here's just kind of a slice of businesses, again, comparing to them to those first-class cities where they, what they would pay elsewhere. So about fifty percent of our businesses are in this category, and they'll pay less than fifty, fifty dollars per month. So they would be just below this number here. About seventy-five percent of our businesses pay less than a hundred dollars a month. Old Chicago in this example is just to touch over that. And then you keep going down the list, elementary school, AIB. Our top ten percent, so you're talking fifteen businesses in the entire city are paying this five sixty-nine a month or somewhere around in that five hundred dollars a month. Top two percent, so you're talking the Walmarts, Targets, Menards of the world, they're paying about a thousand dollars a month. And then the top one percent pay just a little bit more than that. But you're, there's about two hundred total accounts, business accounts. So when you talk about the top one percent, you're talking about two businesses. When you talk about the top two percent, you're talking about four businesses. So this is what they would pay or what they currently pay and then what they would pay in our adjoining cities. One thing I do like to always mention, Wichita and Hutch actually subsidize their stormwater program with two mills. So even though it looks like they're paying a lot less than Wichita, two mills is peeled out of the general fund and given to the stormwater fund every year. And that's because they have like twenty-seven miles of levies. They've got a massive levy system down there. So they actually peel a little bit of money out of their general fund. Again, here's your levy surcharge. So we're trying to make that surcharge equal the bond payment. So we're trying to balance those two out. We think we're getting pretty close to that two fifty to two seventy-five. A lot of it's really gonna depend on what our interest rates are. The bond's about twenty, twenty-two million dollar bond, twenty-one million dollar bond. So the difference between three and four percent is a big number when you start talking that kind of money. Again, we're gonna recommend increase a quarter to two fifty for this year. And then next year, hopefully, we have a little bit more information on what those final costs will be. So then the, well, first, any questions about equivalent units, surcharges, levies? So when we calculate rates, I'm assuming we use some kind of aerial imagery and look at? Yeah. Yeah. We've digitized the entire city. Okay. So do we, do we look at the, like, type of vegetation that's on a property? Yes. Okay, so. Yeah. All right. We use infrared, ortho, ortho, we use infrared aerials. And of course, those show up at night. We fly them at night, take pictures of them. The pavement reflects, and so it shows up as a red. Okay. But like, if you've got, say, like, a lot of native plants that soak up a lot of water, does that lower your score at all or? Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Because you're paying on whatever that square footage of impervious area is. Right. But it's, so it's just impervious versus non-impervious? Correct. Yep. Yep. Several businesses I've talked to, it's, I think it's roughly about four or five parking stalls would be one equivalent unit. So when you start talking about those balances, you know, they can make those decisions. Okay. But you can't tell the difference between, like, turf grass and a flower bed or something like that? No, uh-uh, because those both won't radiate. You can tell the difference between gravel and grass. You can tell the difference between asphalt and grass. But when you talk dirt to dirt, no. Okay. Yeah, we've digitized every lot in the city, so we know exactly what that impervious area is.
Could you talk to them about pervious cement and that kind of thing if they wanted to lower their?
Yeah, there's only one place that we know of that has, that has pervious cement. That's Kansas State University.
Yeah.
We haven't had anybody approach us about it. That's something you could look at. It's very, it's, you have to be very careful where you use it. It's very selective on the spots that you can use it.
But it might be something to make sure the public knows about if they're building.
Yeah. We actually talk about that every year. So we have a stormwater presentation with builders every March. And we talk about those sorts of things, those sorts of offsets that you can use, rain gardens, rain barrels, all of those things.
Yeah, my driveway's getting more and more pervious.
Not, not by joys. So Fee and Loue Program, this is something we started a couple of years ago. In the downtown watershed, when you get into the flat areas of the city, it's incredibly difficult to detain water because it's so flat, you have no place to outlet that, that bottom of the dam to. So we created a Fee and Loue Program a couple of years ago now. There's several cities around the state that are doing it. Wichita, Lenexa, Overland Park, quite a few places are doing it. Instead of paying for detention in your lot, you can pay a fee and then we take those dollars and we're gonna go do CIP projects with them. So that's what the Fee and Loue Program is. We're looking at another watershed, the East Side Watershed, east of McCall Road, down in that area, kind of where the wastewater treatment plant is, kind of down by there for another East Side Watershed. He was mentioned in a drainage study early 2000s. He was in one of the drainage studies at one of the master plans. And so we're looking at that. We'll be back this fall to talk about that a little bit if there's some opportunities there also. And then the last thing we're looking at also is BMP Fee and Loue Program that Bill mentioned a couple of months ago. We're still investigating that where if you do a development, you wouldn't necessarily have to build best management practices, water quality. Over the last five years or so, EPA has really started enforcing those clean water quality infrastructure. So we've been, we adopted that five, six years ago. So that's another thing we're looking at also, where you would, instead of building individual lots that have clean water separators, we take those dollars and we go out into Wildcat Creek somewhere and repair forty-seven acres with it or whatever that number would be. So those are kind of the items we're looking at in stormwater. Any questions?
Questions? Discussion?
Brian, on that ninety-dollar average bill that we showed for water and wastewater, so this ten seventy-five or eleven fifty on top of that?
No, that's included.
Included in the ninety?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yep. Yeah, so the stormwater fee is about one percent of your total bill. So your total bill's around ninety bucks. Stormwater's about ten of that.
Things do add up, though. It seems like every time I get an AT&amp;T bill or a Cox bill, it's a little, you know, nobody's saying, is that okay? So we do need to be as frugal as we can while still following all the EPA guidelines and that.
EPA, and we know we have a flooding history downtown that we're trying to address. And I mean, those things happen over decades. They don't happen, you know, over days and months. It takes a while to not only generate the revenue, but to generate the plans.
Yeah, and I think we've also seen whether climate deniers want to talk about it. We've seen more intense storms. And, you know, they can wreak havoc.
Yes, that's a great point.
Easily that, no, you just can't get ready for six inches dropping on, on one spot in Riley and then coming down Wildcat Creek.
Yeah, and the latest modeling that, that we do when we look at a development or a watershed, NOAA sent out some updated precipitation tables within the last twelve to eighteen months. So we do have some updated models. And what they're talking about is you don't get more water in a year, but you get more water at one time.
At one.
Yeah, it's the intensity curves that are really starting to, starting to curve.
Really impact us.
Yeah, those two and three-inch rains in an hour that you, those are getting pretty common. We had one actually earlier this year. We had about a three-and-a-half-inch rain in an hour. Did quite a bit of flooding over by Seaco Park.
Anyway, just thanks for the update. Nice to see all the progress that's being made and pretty comfortable with where all the numbers are coming.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Jamie, Peter? You covered it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Any comments from the public on stormwater, the stormwater fund? As you can see, it's somewhat complicated. Okay, we'll move on to item D, which is to discuss the 2025 total budget and city mill levy for publication.
Wanted to take some time, go over these scenarios. We, this was the scenario we had up in front of you all. Just to remind you, no action on any of the utilities. No action here either. Looking for consensus on what to publish in the paper. Rebecca has an ad ready to go first thing tomorrow morning. She's gonna put two numbers in that ad. There's a total budget for the city and a total mill levy. The revenue-neutral rate established the mill levy at fifty-two point nine. Tonight is a discussion about both the mills and where you want to land on a total bill, a total budget for the city. I'll just hop right down to that. So the general fund is anywhere from forty-six point eight to forty-seven point three million. The special revenue funds, which you received detailed sheets on that Friday in your packet, is about seventy-eight point four million. Utilities, which we just saw presentations on, those three funds, that's sixty-one point four million. Debt, there's also a debt budget sheet attached to the packet tonight at thirty-seven point eight million. And then our internal service fund at four point six million. So the range that we have before you this evening, based on the information before you, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine point one to two-hundred-and-twenty-nine point six million.
Jason, could you just expand for the public what internal service means?
Rena or Rebecca can, probably better than I. You want to give it a go?
So, good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners. So our internal service funds, we have two budgeted. We have our vehicle fleet-related fund as well as our IT fund. And so essentially, it is the cost of the internal service that those particular departments provide to the other departments within the organization. And those costs allocated back to them. You're welcome.
I think sometimes there's questions about when we just sort of group four million together.
Yeah, and these are near the bottom of those detailed budget sheets, the IT fund and the vehicle fleet management fund. So both of those are there. You can see the budgets in 2024 substantially higher. We obviously recognize we're not gonna be buying vehicles in 2025. On the information technology fund, this is the fund that captures all the revenues from the departments. And we have a slight increase from three point two to three point three million.
Commissioners?
So in this, in this budget, just wanted to cover some questions, make sure that I got a level set. Is the same one you did before? So there's no salary increases?
Let me walk through these scenarios. The six point nine million is basically what you saw. So our, our budgeted expenditures for 2025 at thirty-nine point eight million is what you saw last Tuesday with no COLA, no merit. The MFD union is in here at that two-and-a-half percent, but no other employees are in there. The one above, you can see the mill levy here is also three point two mills. The one above that is roughly the same forecasted cash balance does have a two-and-a-half percent forecasted increase to pay, but it also has four mills. So there's your, there's your extra six hundred K roughly, going from three point two to four mills on the revenue side. And then on the expenditure side, there is an increase in roughly a half million dollars. The other two scenarios are about holding the forecasted expenditures at thirty-eight million, which is a one-point-eight million dollar reduction from what I shared last Tuesday. And in this example, we held the three point two mills in order to get the eight point eight cash balance. And then the last one is go all the way to four mills on the revenue, hold the expenditures at thirty-eight million to realize a nine-point-three million dollar cash balance. So those are the four scenarios we put together. The general fund fluctuates between the forty-seven million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand and the forty-six million, eight hundred and seven thousand. And that's really the difference you have in these two numbers, in these two numbers.
Okay. So then, in all these numbers, they still have the chamber and outside agency increases in the, in the TGT. So, which comes to close to four hundred thousand dollars. So that's four hundred thousand dollars if we chose to that we could pull into the general fund and, and make some differences in this number.
It, it won't necessarily change your total budget.
No, no.
But it would impact your general fund.
The general fund and the mill levy.
Mill levy, exactly.
Right.
Yeah, that could be a scenario.
Yeah. And then is ATA still in the general fund?
It is out of EcoDevo.
Okay, so that has been moved.
We moved it to the seventy percent.
Okay, so that has been.
That has been moved. I believe that's the only thing we've done.
Okay.
Because there was a consensus that night to do it.
And I know you didn't calculate it this way, but in my mind, when I saw what we looked at as far as that development, the two hundred and sixty thousand, in my mind, that should have been built in in money that had to come out of the general fund. Now, not all that would have come out of next year. have come out of next year.
Right.
Uh, but a portion of that theoretically should have been planned to come out of that year.
If it showed up anywhere for 2025, it would have been in the bond interest. It would have been part of a transfer we would have made out of ECODEVO, the O2 money.
But you said you were going to fund it out of the general fund.
We were just going to move that money into the general fund instead of the ECODEVO fund.
Because it's coming from the.
It's a payment we'll receive from K-State.
Right, but that payment, I mean, we can do anything we want with that payment.
You can. I've just, historically.
Right, so in other words, I'm still saying the same thing.
You are.
Use that money in the general fund.
Yep.
To, to make that up. So in, in my mind, it may not be total 260.
Sure.
But there should be some amount of money we could bring in to take in that, that number.
And just so, when we went into the bond and interest and we extracted those three mills, that is pulling money out of the bond and interest. So when you, when you're talking about money that would have went into the bond and interest as well, it's in that realm of discussion.
Right, but this was still an outflow of dollars.
It is, yes.
That, that we'd have been able to, to make up. Go ahead.
Well, I mean, I, I think we can, I mean, sit here and kind of manipulate it and move money around from funds for, for days. We could sit here and look and, and try to manipulate it. I think, for me, it's looking at those, the expenditures and just keeping those as low as possible. I, when we're looking at these scenarios, I'm looking at that 5% reduction from what was proposed last week, which gets us to about 38 million, to one of those bottom ones. Because I think when it comes, comes down to it, we, we just have to keep our, our spend is close to our revenues. And I think when we're talking about pulling funds and moving them around, I, I don't know if that's true to the nature. I think.
I, I would argue giving $400,000 to the outside agents and chambers is spending money someplace else that we could have it here.
Well, it is, but I, I will recommend, I, I worry that if we're taking our revenue strategies out, like tho, those are our organizations, not all of them are ours, so I, like, I, that was a generalization, that are creating sales tax dollars for the organization. And if we're not funding, are we then risking future revenues? So, so I just don't want to short our revenue strategies.
Possibly, but these are increases. We're not decreasing any of their funds. And what you literally have to say that we need to increase taxes or cut staff by that 400,000 be, by giving it away.
So, okay, your 400,000 is just the increase over last year request.
Just the increase request. That's my heartburn. My heartburn is increasing spending by 400.
Not a lot of heartburns.
Yeah, I do. $400,000 we're going to give to other agencies. And to me, that translates directly into tax increase or staff reductions.
Yeah, I actually, I agree with you, John. You know, if we are asking city staff to stay as close to 2024 revenues next year, I, I think it's fair for us to do that to the outside agencies as well. And try and shore up our, our, our cash balance a little bit with that. Damian, I definitely see your point in that we do need to invest in those things that, you know, hopefully will bring us some growth and some, some outside revenue. But again, it's, at this point, it's kind of, we can control this. It's controlling what we can control. We can't control all of the economic forces that are going to impact our sales tax revenue next year. But we can control where our expenses are going.
Yeah, we don't know what sales tax is going to do. We do know that there's going to be one game in Ireland and not in Manhattan that will lose a few dollars. Would you all be, you know, agreeable to do the 3.2 and publish that? Because we still have time to, to dicker and really look at what we might pay out of different funds to lower the general fund. Or what, what is the desire of the?
What is the desire of what, Karen?
Of the, of the commission.
I, I mean, I, I was still on the, keep the, the four mills, just so that we're not, when I say keep, because we're not making the final decision on that. I think it's clear for the public then, we're not looking at too different or, or getting confused about that and keep it. So we're not, we can't go back after that. We can't go back up. So I would keep it, but.
We have to follow a state process. We already have one hearing established.
Yeah.
For revenue neutral rate of four mill increase. And by another state law, we have to also publish a total budget along with that proposed mill levy for the second hearing we'll host on the third. So in years past, we have published two different. And once you hit a bottom on one of them, you obviously can't go high, higher. So you're at four mills on the revenue neutral rate. Now it's a matter of what do you want to publish with the total budget?
I, I mean, I won't, I won't vote for that. I mean, I've got a different philosophy on it. I like kind of cutting to the chase, getting that lower number that we really want to come in at, in there. And then you create the sense of urgency to get to it. To me, keeping that high up there is just kicking down, kicking the can down the road again and not giving direction, if the direction you want to give, which my direction is wanting to give is, we want to ratchet this thing down. I mean, I'm still wanting a 7% property tax increase over last year. I even put numbers together compared to that last one of how we could get there and where the money would come from.
So.
To do it. But, I mean, I know I'm in the minority, so you guys might want to just figure out where you want to publish it. Because, you know.
That's where I'm at. I think something that I would like for us to settle on is kind of where we want our cash balance to, where we want to forecast our cash balance for '25 and work backwards from there. I know we've talked about, you know, the $10 million or, or, or three months, three months operating. None of these are there yet. They're close. So I, I don't know. I, I, I think, yeah, we want to have 10% or 10, $10 million cash balance, but we're not going to get there without, you know, major, major changes this year. You know, it, it's taken us a long time to get to where we are financially, and it's going to take us some work to get back. So I think if we can incrementally improve a little bit, I'd be, I'd be okay with that. And, you know, so all that to say, I, I, I kind of am more comfortable with this 8.8 scenario. You know, 8.8 million. It, it kind of meets in the middle of reducing expenses and not raising taxes too much. Unless you ask Gary, any, any sales tax incre, or property tax increases too much. But, you know, it, it, I think it kind of shows a little bit of compromise on, on all sides. So what does, what does everybody think about that?
Susan, do you have some input?
I am leaning towards similar reasoning that Peter just expressed. I, I like that idea of, you know, I, I appreciate that staff has reduced their forecast expenditures. I, I think also it's a good faith effort for the community if we can try to keep the additional revenue or the mill levy to 3.2. Yeah, I, I've expressed several times, I would really like to see us try to get into better economic shape by achieving that 10 million benchmark. But given all of the work that we're doing here right now, I'm leaning towards the scenario that has us at 8.8 million.
Jason, could you repeat that for the?
Yeah, I think the mayor shared a lot of similar sentiments to Commissioner Opel. She, her preference was the 8.8. She appreciated staff's efforts to reduce the forecasted 2025 expenditures to 38 million. We anticipate ending this year at a forecasted expenditure of 38.6 million. So we'll need to go in-house and look for $681,000 in reductions, which, again, I think that's, it's going to be a challenge for some, but between the nine departments, we'll, we'll put our strategies together and try to give you a feel for that on September 3rd and September 17th. Just where, what areas we'll move into to find those savings.
I would still like to find some way we could assist staff. And I didn't, don't know if you looked at what, if we put something in base so that the people at the low end, you know, get a significant raise and the people at the high end don't really need it, so.
Yeah, and the, the two and a half was across the board, and that's roughly a half million dollars. So you, you could get into half of that amount.
Okay.
And really get into the middle part of the organization and all the way to the bottom.
So for 225,000, we could do something in base.
Yep.
Just, just.
Well, I mean, I do just want to point, if we drop that to 3.2, like, I feel like all of our wiggle room for those items, if we are seriously saying, or how much are we going to compromise on that bottom cash balance then? Because if we're saying, let's do this one, let's go ahead and lower the mill levy or the additions from four to 3.2, and then we go back and say, you know what, nope, let's give raises, or, oh, what about this? I mean, every time we've seen the presentation, the expenses have gone up. I mean, day to day, they've, they've gone up because there's other calculations. I mean, this gives us, I think, no wiggle room. And if we're saying 8.8 is where we want to be, there's not an option for those. So I guess the question is, like, how far are we willing to compromise on that ending cash balance from 2025?
If, if I may, I, I put this together and I just, it, it really breaks down the mill levy. And I, I know it's small, and we'll put this out there for public consumption. But it is basically following a home since 2020, all the way through basically now. And it looks at the valuation growth based on the valuation growth of our community. So in, from 20 to 21, we grew basically by 1%. Then into 22, we grew 5.9. Into 23, we grew by 9.7. That's really the big valuation increase last year that impacted the reduction in the mill levy. We're looking at 4% for next year. And again, these are valuation increases, not specifically to single family, not commercial. This is the average. Everything's together. Correct, correct. 13% accurate. And we asked for that number this year, and it's between four and five.
And I, and I have spoken with two people whose valuation went down. I mean, you know, it's not.
Yeah. It's across the board. But here, here's where I really want to show, that valuation takes that $200,000 home in 2020 to a projected $244,000 home come, you know, this year. And that will apply to the mill levy you're actually contemplating now. These are the proposed mill levies to date. And you can see we've got a negative on the county side. I actually think it's lower than this. He told us today at the chamber, it's like a 2.1 mill decrease. This was a 1.9 mill decrease. The school district informed us they're going from 60.045 to 59.0, 59.909. So between the two of them, they're lowering their mill levy a little over 2.2 mills. The math that we keep seeing in the paper is really a matter of adding the percentages for the three entities that the city's mill levy provides. But when you look at 48.9 to 52.1, which is our 3.2 mill levy scenario, it's a 6% increase. But the negatives run it down to a 0.76% increase. The 4.8 overall is a result of your valuation growth. So I just wanted to point that out. If there's ever a year the city's going to think about raising the mill levy, this year is probably the best in the last decade, because the other two entities are actually declining their mill levy. And I'm not saying that's a reason to, but I've actually heard a commissioner say they can't raise the mill levy because others are raising the mill levy. It's, it's really, it gets back into your own philosophical approach to this and where you want to be. If, if we want to ramp this to 52.9 to 8, which is what's proposed, there's, there's your increase versus, at four mills versus the 3.2. It, it changes it to a 1.25, but you're 5.3 increase. And it's a $215 increase over last year's total bill. So if you want, this is where former commissioner really wanted to be able to see these mill levies and be able to tweak them and play with them. So when you all make your decision, you have a better comfort of how it's actually impacting a property owner. And you can get back up into these spreadsheets and you can hold the 234,700 constant. And it's not, you're actually going to have a 1.3% increase to your property taxes in that, in that event. And that's if we stay at four mills. We drop that to roughly that 3.2, now you got a 0.8% increase in your tax bill. So I just bring this up for your education and familiarity with what your decision really is going to, how it's going to impact a property. Now, these are, you can double them, you can triple them, and, and your, your total down here will double or triple. But you, you are looking at a pretty average home in Manhattan in this scenario. Any questions about this?
I just would like to add one thing. I think both John and I made it very clear to our CPD that we would, would not tolerate another $2 million increase. And they've got to find some, some ways.
I didn't want it this year.
I know. Well, I, I'm sorry, I came in very late and, and, you know, I just had one meeting under my belt when I was, so. We, we've got to get a handle on that, and that will certainly help in the future.
I, I do wish we had that forecasted chart when we can look at next year. I, I worry if we don't keep that four mills on the table. Like, I, I get it, this year's going to be tough, and it's going to be tough on the, the community in a lot of ways. It's going to be tough on the city. It's, you know, my hope is, is that we can still, we don't have to let a lot of the services go. You know, we can, we can still find efficiencies. But I, I worry if we don't keep that at four mills, and this is a worry because I haven't seen the, the future projections with these numbers, it's not just one rough year, it's going to compound because we're not, we're not making up the ground that we have lost. And, and so that's why, I mean, trust me, I don't want my property taxes to go up any more than anyone else. But I think if we keep that four million, that four mills, sorry, four mills on the table, manage expenses a lot next year, my assumption is it would, we would be better off next year also from an expenditure standpoint. And, and we're not looking at such significant jumps in, in the mill levy. That's, that's a thought and a discussion. I know, I know we've looked at those projections for the future before, and these are some adjusted numbers.
Well, there's certainly no problem with keeping it four because that's what we publish it at. And, you know, and we have another almost month to look at various things. And there may be some funds, like the ECODEVO, that we can transfer some things out of the general fund into without decimating the ECODEVO fund or something like that. We haven't really talked about that kind of thing at all. So, you know, if, if, I just want to know where everybody feels comfortable. You know, the thing is that if, if we publish it at four, we're not in any way throttling our, our possibilities. I don't want it to be at four.
No, I understand what you're saying. I just have a different philosophy. I, you know, to me, necessity is the mother invention. You need to get it down so we get something we're working for. If you leave it up, we'll always come up with. If you leave it up, we'll always come up with numbers that are up there, or we won't get them down is where we need, we need to be. And it's not a number I'm going to vote for in the end anyway.
The, the attempt at thirty-eight million in these, in these two scenarios was, it's significant, and it's trying to get our expenditures to match our revenues. And, and we need to get there. And I recognize my getting there all at once, but next year's discussion is not going to, hard to predict. It, the gap isn't as much. If, if we've taken it between four and five million, and in this scenario, it's less than a million. And I do think next year brings a whole, a whole nother level of conversation. We did look into Kansas Gas and Evergy, those rates are at four percent on franchise fees. They can go to five. It's an additional seven hundred thousand potential in revenue. You had asked about that. Even, even a transient gas tax conversation, every percent is roughly four hundred thousand dollars that you're contemplating. And that's at the best year, right? So that's seven and a half, four hundred thousand, that's your three million dollars. So it's about four hundred K per percentage, if you want to toss around that, that as well. Those were questions asked at the last meeting, I wanted to make sure you had those numbers at this meeting, because, yeah, it's just part of that revenue picture now and, and really in the future. It definitely impacts your end users, all of them.
Yeah, the franchise fee, we're just taking their money a different way.
Yeah.
The guest tax, you could say, is paid by somebody else.
Else, yes, very true.
So Jason, when we're publishing the budget and the, the mills, what we're, that can still change, go down?
Yes.
It can still come down?
Definitely, and I think in years past, it has come down in September, am I right, John? It's been lowered in September?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's been lowered at both meetings.
Yeah, so we need to start.
I see what you're saying, John. Like, if we're gonna, if we're gonna end up lowering it anyways, why not do it now? So I guess, are we going to end up lowering it? I see Jamie and, and Jason, I hear both of you. You know, if we lower the mill levy this year, you know, do, well, not lower, but if we go to three point two increase, we're probably going to have to ask for another mill increase next year. So do we rip the Band-Aid off this year?
My fear is we have the will on this one, and we still go up the, the next one.
Well.
And, and I do think you just, that's why I mentioned where the, the county and the school district are at. It, it's a, it's a unique year to watch them both lower their mill levies.
Yeah.
All of us are going to be on the commission again next year, and.
Well.
You know.
I'm probably a runaway.
So, you know, we all have that ability to, to stick to our guns next year and remember what we do this year.
There are some possibilities too. We've talked about a sales tax for Park and Rec. And I think if we could put together one that's palatable to the community and also really assists the community in various things, we definitely need indoor water in Manhattan, there's no question. And I think we need to go to the school district and university and say, you guys got to be part of this. I mean, we're providing fields, we're providing pools, we're providing all these things for the schools, and I'm not seeing any kind of reimbursement, so. There, there are things that perhaps next year might ease the discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that, Karen. I think for, for this year.
Yeah.
What we can control, ooh, that's going to be a hard statement, are, is that expenditure, and I think that that's a significant component. So where I'm at, for the purpose of what we're publishing, I'm still at four mills, and I'm at thirty-eight million in expenditures, knowing that that's, that's going to be tough on, on everyone, and, and I, I, I don't say that lightly, but that's where I'm at, on what I think we need to publish.
Okay, and this is a discussion only, so Peter.
But we do have to make it, we have to make a consensus, so.
We don't have to vote.
You don't have to vote.
So, let me, I'm just, I'm just going to throw it out there. It's, I mean, we can keep having more discussion, and I'll, I'll keep one down on mine. We've, we've got a time limit, though. So I'm at four mills and a thirty-eight million dollar budget, so the fourth scenario that Jason showed.
You're moving that we.
I don't know if I have to move, I think just, just, oh.
Oh yeah, we do need to have public comment.
Public comment?
Yeah, there's going to be some.
Would you?
Would you like me to reenter any of the information or anything, or good to go?
Just state your name and address again.
Jessica Winters, four oh eight Houston Street. I think that Karen's comment earlier about trying to get this as an increase on sales tax and trying to shove a water project on the community that doesn't want it is at the very least disrespectful to the many members of your community that have voiced a very serious concern about that. I mean, like, no offense, but you guys have been mismanaging funds for years now, and like, the community's paying attention, and they're telling you what they want, and you're ignoring them. But, I mean, that's what we've come to expect from you, so.
My name is Don Quixote. Oh, wait, sorry, sorry. Gary Olds, thirty-three oh eight Frontier Circle. Fill this sheet out after.
You can, you can sign in when you finish.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so, boy, in four, five minutes. Help me to comprehend, what mill levy are we at now? I think four point nine, right? Four point nine, right, and we're.
Forty-eight, forty-nine.
Forty-eight point nine two nine, okay. And three and a half on top of that, right? That's the discussion, or four on top of that, right? One of the two, okay. I'm just trying to keep it straight, because, you know, I, I read the paper, and, and I'm sure even though a lot of people don't read the paper, you know, it's got to be really tough on Peter Rice to get all the facts straight. I mean, like, unless I'm mistaken, I'm not sure that these numbers are even the numbers that you're talking about tonight, to be honest with you, but I read it a couple days ago. So that makes it a challenge, and maybe that's true of other medias, media outlets as well, I'm not sure. But I just want to clarify something. So in this four mills or three point two mills, can you tell me, are, are the outside agencies going to still get their four hundred thousand? It's built in there? Yeah, yeah? Does that mean yes?
I'll write your questions down, just keep going.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, right, okay. So that's one thing, I'm, I like the idea of having them, those outside agencies, in the same boat as everybody else. I think if you remember correctly, when I was here a while back, my challenge to you, or another challenge to you, was I didn't really expect you to hit the revenue neutral. But the challenge was, how close can you get to the revenue neutral? And, you know, any way you slice it, there's going to be pain. That's the reality of it, where we are, where we've been, and it's a hard road aho without a doubt. So I would, I would agree that there's a discussion between, do we need indoor water, or do we want an indoor water? I think that same discussion came up when the rec centers came around, and now we have wonderful rec centers, and I'm not sure that we have the funds to, to keep them going. But we will, because we're Manhattan, and that's what we do. So just to make sure I've got my numbers right, I think you made the comment, I can't remember, Jamie, I'm sorry. Somebody said, we're losing ground. What ground are we losing? That, what, what did that? I'm still confused here. By the way, the reason I'm out in my two minutes, the reason I'm here to ask the questions tonight is sadly, unlike last year, where I was able to make the R and R hearing, I'm not going to be in town. Our, our son is getting married in Michigan, and we're going to be gone, so I wanted to at least throw out some thoughts here. What ground are we losing? I'm more inclined with the three point two, but I'm just one guy out of fifty-four thousand or whatever the population is. It's, we've got to, I just, I don't understand why the paper reports in the beginning that, you know, there's a choice between revenue and expenses, and those expenses include employees, and we got somewhere between thirty-five and seventy employees that we could let go, or maybe I got that number wrong, but we seem, we can't seem to let go of anybody. John Deere let go of a whole bunch of people. I just read in the paper the other day, another big corporation let go of another, a bunch of people, although it was General Motors. But government can't let go of people, I just don't get it. I mean, you know, five people, ten people? I feel like, you know, the negotiations in the Sodom and Gomorrah where he's bargaining, if I could find ten people, if I could find five people that are right, I mean, we can't, we can't let anybody go? Not a soul, not, you know? And my last comment, and, and I think, Karen, you said it very well, very, very, very well. You got to find a way to help the people understand that all this money we're talking about, the lion's share of that, if that's a general accurate statement, is going over to RCPD, and that's got to stop. That's got to stop somehow, and the only way it's going to stop is from the RCPD board, and that's seven or nine members, whatever it is, it's got to say no.
Thank you, Gary. Did you sign in?
I will.
Thank you. Other comments? Karen?
So I'll go, go back to where I was. I guess maybe we can separate these instead of talking about them as, as two things, but budget-wise, are, are any of us not comfortable with the thirty-eight million that was proposed? As in, I'm just asking on the general expense side? The thirty-eight million in expenditures?
Nope.
No. Is, I mean, is there anyone opposed to? I'm just trying to narrow down which slides we want to be looking at for the discussion.
So the, the expenditures are similar to the mills in that, once we publish the thirty-eight million, we can't go, is that a ceiling at that point?
So what you're going to publish is this, this two hundred and twenty-nine million dollar figure.
Okay.
And the difference between the two is the difference between forty-seven million and a forecasted revenue, because that you have to match it in terms of expenditures, and your forty-six million, eight oh seven. That's, the difference between those two numbers is the difference between these two numbers, right up here. These two numbers are the difference between these two numbers.
Don't you have to put the mill levy too?
So it's really just, it's just the mill levy we need to.
But we're not going to actually vote on that?
We just need to publish something, John. You're going to have a hearing and multiple votes in September. This is just to meet a state statute. In, in years past, we've just kind of looked down the line, you did this for revenue neutral rate, are you okay with a two twenty-nine, six fifty-nine, two sixty-three budget and fifty-two point nine mills? And, and we've just got head nods, and we go publish that, and we go, come back on September third, have two hearings, have a first reading of an ordinance, and then you'd really debate where you want to land.
I'll just say for the press, I don't support a four or three point two mill levy increase, it needs to be lower, so.
So what do we want to?
Jason?
Yes, Susan.
Could you, could you put the work, the Excel spreadsheet back up?
Sure.
Because I think that that was a really important tool, particularly your sidebar comment about how Mercury misrepresents the property tax increase that's possible.
Jason, will you change it back? Yeah, I think, I think we also talk about the mill levy.
This is what you wanted, isn't it?
And, am I correct in that a mill increase on a two hundred thousand dollar house is twenty-three dollars a year?
Yes, yes, if you go back to the twenty, two hundred thousand dollar home.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, you know, it's not as frightening as it, it sounds. So if, or four mills, it would be ninety-three dollars a year, ninety-two dollars a year, my math. You know, which is equal to maybe two pedicures?
Karen, I wouldn't trivialize it by equating it to pedicures.
Yeah, that's.
That is a grocery bill for a lot of families, but.
Yeah, but.
The home value.
Just Ctrl-Z.
Is that how you go back?
Yeah.
And fifty-two point nine two eight is the full four, if you want me to go lower, I can.
I don't, but John does.
I don't know if the computer will go as low as John wants it to go.
That's true, it'll break it.
So, okay, so.
Just kidding, just kidding, sorry.
You, how many digits do you have that go in?
The other thing that, it, it may be a wash if we talk about the rate increases by the end of this year, but in, in January, the state sales tax on food is also going to be going away.
Yeah, on food, so I think the mayor mentioned the food sales tax would be dropping to, I believe, zero, and, and that will obviously free up a few dollars at the grocery store.
I don't like.
I just think the thing is with inflation and how people are really hurting these days to try to say, oh, you're getting all these other breaks so we can raise your taxes and raise your costs. I mean, if you want to make that argument, fine, go ahead and make that argument, it's not one I'm going to make.
You know, I'm saying just that there are a lot of different factors in play here, and we, it is a moving target, but I think that Jason's comment about this is, you know, this is an opportunity with the county and the school district making the cuts that they're making, bearing in mind that the school district gets way much more of the property tax than we do. If we need to, to do this, and I know you are fundamentally opposed to it, I think this is the year when we would consider it.
Yeah, so the mayor can print, the city doesn't want to miss this great opportunity to increase your mill levy from the city's side.
John, stop, stop giving headlines. Okay.
All right.
So I'm at, I'm at.
Advocating my position.
I'm at four mills, for, for what we're publishing, we can skip past John and go down the line.
We don't need to, we don't need a motion.
We don't have to motion, it's just discussion, and I do think that spreadsheet was helpful in understanding some things, Jason, I appreciate that. I would like to see that can, continue out and, and keep going, because I do think, looking at forecasts, and I'm going to keep making the point, it is going to be tough this year to do everything, including raising the mill levy by that much, but I, I think it's going to just, I think, it's a think, set us up for a better future and not, not having to have that. I also understand John's concern that we could be back in the same situation next year.
So do I, am I to assume we just need a general?
Yeah, like consensus.
Okay.
Yeah.
Everybody for four mills?
We're not actually voting, but I'm okay with that.
You okay with publishing four mills in the, the higher two hundred and twenty-nine million?
Absolutely not.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to publish that. It's not locked in stone, there's, there's lots of discussion and motions to be made in September. Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you all. Okay, that's it.
I'll move to adjourn the August twentieth, twenty twenty-four City Commission meeting.
Second.
Did you call the roll?
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Oh, yes.
Mayor Adam Check?
Yes.
Mayor Proton, McCollough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
And we hope Susan will be back and be better.